Dr. Cordelino?
Here.
Mr. Daltrey?
Here.
Dr. Modra?
Here.
Mr. Morella?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
Ms. Suckerman?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Ammer?
Here.
Mr. Hobo?
Let's move into the question.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies and with any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Monmouth Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included time, date, and location that was posted at the Monmouth Township Municipal Building, all Monmouth Township Public Schools, the Monmouth Public Library, the Monmouth Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper, on January 11, 2019.
Thank you, Mrs. Slant. We have our two representatives from the high school, and we're gonna go with the one that most people like more than the others, so Mason will go with you first, okay? Or if you want him to go first, it doesn't matter.
So sorry, I'm a little sick, so I'm only gonna do it a little bit today. So, FBLA states for this week, and we are excited to see what the results are going to be. And last time, I told you guys about how we were having some students go to Deca Nationals, and so this year, those students are Colin Noon, Sebastian Rocklor, Ethan Horowitz, and Samantha Pollan. And a little bit of our drama club, so Drama Club's Broadway Night auditions are this upcoming Monday, March 25th, I'm gonna be auditioning for that. Basically, that's just gonna be a night where like fifteen or sixteen students are gonna be singing Broadway songs, and that'll be that. And towards the end of the year, there's gonna be one more production from the Drama Club, and it's gonna be not more like so much of a musical, like a set play. Basically, what it's gonna be like is it's gonna be kind of like open for like students to like offer up ideas, so like a skit from like SNL, or maybe like a skit from like a part in another play, where they can like just show off, maybe a skit from something else. And my last thing is that we had a school around concert last Thursday, and that went really well. There was a bunch of new musicians in it, and they all performed very well, put a lot of effort into making a great show, and I'll pass the mic to Malik.
Good evening. The spring sports are fully underway. Final decisions for varsity and junior varsity have been made, and teams are finishing up their preseason scrimmages. For baseball, they're looking forward to a great year for the baseball team, although the first games may be a little choppy because of their new coach, Mr. Ian Schrindl. The Mustangs are led by two Division One athletes this year, Matt Patillo and Gary Nieskins, both pitchers. I know it was the amazing performances from them this year, as we wish them good luck. The bar for the Mustangs team, for the boys' across team, is very high. Coach DiGanto looks to take his team deep into the state tournament this year. The boys' across team consists of three Division One athletes, in Jake Garde, Tyler Ravenell, and Brendan McHale. Hopefully, a winning year would come from all their hard work. The girls' across team will look to get back on their feet after losing many seniors from last year, led by captains Gwen Chopey and Morgan Fall. The team is looking forward to a successful season. Girls' softball started off their season right after winning their first couple of scrimmages. We expect to see great things this year from John Palazzano, a junior committed to play softball at Penn State. If you have any questions about anything. Thank you, gentlemen. Do we have any questions? Great general information, thank you very much. I know you probably want to home a study now, so I can see you leaving.
I actually have to.
Yeah, actually, we have to. Ah, that won't be important. Thanks again, guys. Good night. Superintendent's report?
Okay, I did include in the board docs, in the public content area, the report on our combination of the service learning committee. Service learning was something that was included in the five-year strategic plan. A committee was put together this year involving teachers, administrators. We discussed the idea of service learning. We took a look at what was going on in a number of other districts, conducted a couple surveys. I'm just giving you the brief summary of the report, because it's there for folks to access. We did not feel that it would be in our best interest to create a high school graduation requirement that would create an obligation for students to commit to a certain number of service hours. The survey data that we had indicated that almost three-quarters of our students at middle and high school level were engaged in service learning or service activities for at least one hour or more a week. Given our focus on trying to create an environment for our students that is not fraught with stress, we really feel strongly that creating a specific high school graduation requirement for service hours would not be in the best interest of our students, or our staff for that matter. We do hope to encourage teachers to create and implement service learning, so we will be creating a resource with some suggested activities that they may be able to participate in with their students. We are also looking to create a means by which students through the course of their career, beginning at the elementary level, can track the service hours. And we do know that there are a lot of service hours being done through the school, starting in the very earliest grade levels. So moving forward, we will try to enhance and support those activities, but with determination was not to recommend an additional high school graduation requirement. I don't know if any of our members had any questions?
Just a comment. I think we all had an idea about how much service our students commit to every year, and I felt really proud reading the report and seeing what a large percentage of our students are engaged in volunteer work. It was really nice to see. I don't have documents on paper.
Okay, that concludes my recording. Now, Mrs. Slant will be doing a presentation on the tentative proposed budget, so yeah, I certainly wanna make sure we have enough time for questions and for presentation.
Thank you, Dr. O'Brien. We have a lot of good news on the agenda. We'll read it over. A lot of good things are happening in our schools. Need to tell someone. Business and administrative report, Mrs. Slant?
Over the last few months, the Finance and Facilities Committee have been working on the preparation of the 2019-20 school budget, and we will be doing a presentation tonight of the tentative budget. This budget then goes to the county office to be reviewed by the executive superintendent. The public hearing on the budget, which will be the final budget, is on the 30th of April here at 7:30. So when we go through the process of... You want me to push the buzzer? Sorry about that, we're having technical difficulties here. When we go through the process of putting together the budget, the Board of Education considers a number of different elements. The first of those would be the strategic goals of the district set by the superintendent and the board, as well as the academic expectations that have been established throughout the district. In order for us to put a budget together which is compliant with state statute, the expenditures, the places where we are spending the money, have to be funded through resources available to the board. In other words, they have to put together a balanced budget. And in order to do that, we have to be running programs that are running efficiently, at the lowest possible costs with the highest probability of success. In accordance with the state statute, the school districts in the state of New Jersey have a format in which they follow to put their budgets together. What they do is they take transactions that are like in kind, organize them by program and area, and based on those programs and areas, they then collapse those areas into a number of different topics, including instruction, support services, administration, employee benefits, and operations. The first area, which is instruction, are the events that occur in the classrooms every day. They include regular classroom instruction for general ed, special education, basic skills and bilingual instruction, co-curricular activities, those are the extracurricular activities that occur after school that are part of the school program, athletic activities, those would be your sports teams, and added district tuitions that are paid for students for whom we are not able to meet their needs within the district. When the budget is built, it starts with the building levels and the principals, department heads throughout the district, where they evaluate their programs, and we start at a zero, what's called a zero-based budgeting, meaning that they start with a zero and they build up from there. They need to man all of their classrooms, they need to man the programs that we're offering within the district, and the related purchase services and supplies that those programs need. As a result of the analysis that the administration has done, we have made a number of changes to the 2019-20 budget from what we currently have. In the case of teaching staff, our teaching staff are driven by the student needs and the enrollments. As a result of our enrollment changes at the elementary schools, we anticipate adding three additional elementary teachers to address class sizes that will be over the board policy limits, as well as an additional resource room teacher at Lazard. Last year, we began the one-to-one Chromebook initiative, in which the goal was to provide Chromebooks to all students, grades five through 12. We will be continuing that initiative into this year, as we begin to push Chromebooks down into the third and fourth grade levels at the elementary schools. In addition to that, we are investing a lot more into addressing cybersecurity threats. We are receiving hits all the time. We have neighboring districts who have had breaches that have occurred, and we are moving systems and improvements to prevent that from happening here. So we will be investing additional money into technology in order to prevent those from occurring. Last year at the high school, we implemented a PSAT testing, meaning we offered the PSATs for the juniors to take while they were in school. We will be continuing that program. The only other change that's occurring in the area of instruction is that we will have some reduction in staff based on student needs. This is particularly applicable to the special education area, where as the students' needs change, we may not need staffing at the level that we're currently at. When we look at this area as a whole, we have a proposed budget of $39.5 million, which is up from the current year by 3.83%. The next area is support services. These are services that directly affect the children, and they support the events that are occurring in the classroom. Things like nurses, OTPT, speech, one-to-one aids, the child study team, the guidance services, librarians and media services, the curriculum that's developed for the classroom, as well as the training of the professional staff. Just like with the other areas, we built up from a zero-based budget and we add and change as we see fit. So one of the areas that we're changing in this year is the vocational training service that we use with our special needs students who are up at the high school. Juniors and seniors who are part of some of our special ed programs will receive vocational training, so when they leave the high school, they're able to work in a job successfully. And so that change has occurred. Additionally, we will be extending into next year the program that we started this year. Last week, we had the program AIDS shown to both parents and students and staff. We're gonna continue that. That program is about student anxiety and stress. We'll be continuing another program into next year. Both of those changes are included in the 2019-20 budget. And just as I had mentioned on the other page, reduction in staff related to changes in student needs, again, this is special education, as students no longer need one-to-one aids, those aids will be eliminated. The end result is a $10 million proposed budget for the area of special services, which is up by 1.24 over the current year. The next area is administration and benefits. Administration includes general administration and the administration of the board, the administration of each of the buildings, and the areas of business and technology. Employee benefits include the employer's share, employer's share of the taxes and pension contributions, health benefits such as medical, dental, vision, and then other benefits that are provided for through the collective bargaining agreements. Changes in these areas mostly vary due to variances in legal matters and increases in medical insurance. In total, we have a decrease in the area of administration, down by 22%, and an increase in health benefits that related to the employee benefit increase of 7.36. The last area, in the expenditure area, is buildings and operations. This includes your maintenance and custodial staffs who maintain all of the different functions of the buildings, both cleaning, as well as repairs, security services, which is the security officers that are present in the buildings, transportation services to and from, as well as the field trips and athletic transportation, food services, the food program that is within the district, and then equipment and capital improvements that are proposed. We do, last year, we started with a school resource officer and a part-time Class III officer. We intend to continue both of those positions, those are part of our security services. And we see large changes in the area of equipment and improvements, mostly because the projects that we're doing right now are all part of the referendum that was passed in 2017. The effect of those changes results in a proposed budget of about $10 million, which is down 4.34%. In total, the total budget, when you include all of those different areas, is proposed at $77.7 million, which is up by 0.81 over the previous year. Now, as I had mentioned in the beginning, all of the expenditures, all the costs that we propose have to be funded through resources, and so the amount of the resources provided have to equal the amount of the expenditures proposed. For the revenues, they come from three different sources, local, state, and federal savings. In the case of local, our largest provider of local funding is the tax base, tax levy, and that is going up by 2%. The items included in other revenue are things like subscription busing, we have monies that are collected for tuition, we have miscellaneous revenue, gate receipts, and we are proposing a decline in that line of about 13%. The state sources include the categorical aid, that's the aid that you've heard in the newspapers being spoken about this month, as the governor has approved aids for the different districts. These include things like special ed aid, transportation aid, security aid. We are lucky to be a district that has an increase. We received an additional $280,000 in categorical aid, which is causing that 10% increase. Extraordinary aid relates to extraordinary costs that are tied to special needs students, and we're budgeting that at the same amount as we had in the past. The final category includes federal and savings. Federal is monies that come from the federal government. They relate, in this case, to the SEMI program, in which we are able to collect Medicare funds for students with special needs. The savings is exactly that, it's the money that the board has in reserves that it puts forth for the budget, and that's down by 31%. But overall, you see the same $77.7 million proposed for revenues as you saw with the expenditures, and that's up by 0.18 over the previous year. The only other two areas that are included as part of the budget are special revenue. Special revenue relate to grants that we've been given, local grants that have been given by organizations like the Monmouth Educational Foundation, state grants that have been given for the purpose of supporting the non-public institutions that are within Monmouth Township, and federal resources that are given for Title I and IDEA related to students with special needs and professional development. Those numbers are down because the anticipated funding by the federal government is intended to drop by 15%. Debt service is the area in which we pay off our old debt, so when a referendum is passed, the community supports the idea that they will pay debt off over future years, and that is where that debt is paid. The principal of interest payments are inclusive of the new referendum that was passed in 2017, which is why you're seeing an increase in the amount proposed. This is intended to be an overview of the budget. The idea of the public hearing is to provide more detailed information about the various elements of the budget, and that will be done on April 30th here at 7:30. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Katina. Before we have the questions, the finance committee, four of us have gone over this in more detail than you guys have just heard tonight. It's a lot to get in one sitting, and I thank Renee and Katina for doing this, but between now and the public hearing of April 30th, please review it. If you have any questions, send emails to the administration, Katina or Renee, to get further clarification. There's a lot to absorb in about a 15-minute presentation. Now, is the plan of the administration to do this, have additional work on it leading on the 2nd of April, or is it we're just holding off everything until the 30th?
We are holding off everything until the 30th. There is a finance and facilities meeting on the 26th of March before we do our closed session, where we will do a few highlights of additional information that's come in since our last meeting, but a full meeting of the board not until the 30th.
Well, after that meeting on the 26th, hopefully, we'll be able to get something more than what you have in front of you tonight, but not naturally, but the administration submits to the county a little bit more information, it may be helpful. Excuse me, we might put together a document, not the three-inch binder that we used to get, but something, I know that what we did for the finance committee was very nice, so after our meeting on the 26th, we can look at what we might be getting. Are we now entertaining any questions that anybody may have on this brief presentation, and we'll be getting more information as we move along. Mike, you have your hand up?
Well, it's not much of a question, just a comment that, just a moral fact that if we went up to the 2% cap, and yet if you look collectively at the other sources of revenue, we're down. So, now even with us going with the 2% cap, our total budget is up approximately 4 fifths of a cent. So that's obviously well below rate of inflation, so it's a lean budget, very lean budget.
Just a couple of points of clarification on the administration. There's an anticipated reduction of 22%. Is that projected, or do you know that's gonna happen, and where's coming from?
Yes, I know that's where it's coming. It's not projected, it's actual, and it relates to legal matters that will have been resolved before next year.
Just, when we talk about the resource officer, we have one full-time and two part-time, correct?
Yes, yes, just similar to what we've done this year.
Right, two part-time, yeah. And then last question is, did I hear you say you're anticipating a reduction in federal aid by nearly 14%?
Yes.
Why, from where? I mean, is this...
This is pretty common. The federal government always indicates that they're only gonna fund the next year at 85% of the current year. We have not yet seen that actually come to fruition, but we always budget that way, because that's what they recommend. And this is your IDEA, this is your title grant.
So it's possible we'll still be funding it?
Yes, and historically, we always have.
All right, since there's no other questions at this point, I would anticipate we'll be supporting this tentative budget, a submission to the county office, and hopefully, she will get back to us, and then advertise it in the newspaper. It's scheduled for April 30th, 7:00 PM, 7:30 PM, excuse me, in the Monmouth Municipal Building. Thank you very much. Next part of the agenda, committee reports. We'll start with the finance committee, please.
Well, the last time we met, I gave our report in the Escateen Center on March 26th. The Facilities and Finance Committee will meet again. We'll be talking about financing options for the ESIP program, and I guess finishing touches on the budget.
Thank you. That's next Tuesday, 20...
26th, March 26th.
Mike O'Brien, I mean Palmer, where's the moon instruction?
April 7th.
Policy, Garcia, O'Brien?
Nothing.
Okay, I know we had a lot on, about the meeting last time, and we might have been out with the second meeting tonight. Human patience, Karen, I don't think we're bad, are we?
No.
Or the safety or no, eh, huh? Eligates, the school boards, Karen?
I attended two meetings in Trenton. The first was the Legislative Committee on March 9th, and I'll just mention one thing. There is legislation out there which will hopefully clarify what graduation requirements will be passed by the year 2020. Looks like everything will be status quo through that, so that's good. And on the Board of Directors meeting on 15th, I'll just highlight that, you know, we were very fortunate to see an increase in state aids, some districts did not receive an increase and actually saw a reduction, so New Jersey school boards is sort of grappling with how to possibly make those school districts whole. There is hope that for next year, the state will fully fund extraordinary aid, but we'll see. And there is a sense that the SFRA needs to be revisited.
Thank you, Karen. Morris County, Mike? Rain?
More night.
It's precipitating, it's...
At least for six o'clock.
Morris County, is everything, Karen?
We've got this fast food run on our phone.
Drive awareness, Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, fed last week. The, I guess a newsworthy thing to come out of it is that there seems to have been a decision for a project, graduation, that this year, we're gonna try doing a cruise. I believe they got the spirit of the same, the spirit of New Jersey, that's what I said, the spirit of New Jersey boat, and probably sometime late at night, going to the we hours in the morning, but something different, something to try to encourage more student participation, try to stir up some excitement, and I'm happy excited that this is possible.
Eligate, Mustangs?
Can I ask a question first, Shun? Where is that spirit of New Jersey?
We welcome.
So that they can go out for a couple of hours and...
Yeah, I think right now, they're, I mean, the game plan is probably somewhere around, leave school around 10:30, board the bus, and take off about 11:30 or so. board the bus, and take off about eleven-thirty or so, probably end the cruise somewhere around three or so, then bus back to high school.
Okay, the Mustangs had their meeting on March sixth, the day after our last meeting. Very well-attended meetings and interesting topics, okay? Naturally, they discussed finances and Mustang scholarships and such and such. But there are two things I want to bring to the boys' attention. There was a lot of discussion about bands, all right? And we have, everybody, we have such a great band, Golden State. But they were really discussing about the concept of a pep band, and particularly between a pep band and a competitive marching band. And there seems to be some interest, I don't know where it's going though, or about who the administration, of distinguishing somehow a separate band that would fulfill that function for athletic events as opposed to competition. It might be an offer of a lack of students, whatever. But there was a lot of discussion, some of the people there, you know, who were involved in that, they was involved with the students and so on. So it might be something that, you know, will be coming to an end. So it was just a discussion, but it was quite, quite a long detail, especially about, you know, now we have both, not necessarily two separate bands, I don't know exactly how, they're just exploring, you know, interlock, so it's two different groups, okay? Also, there are quite a few minor changes this year. We're going post, you know, our feet are facilities. There are a number of events that are county events. I don't have a list of related, kind of baseball tournaments or things like that. I'm not sure I have that list, all right? But the ground is going to be open during those events. It's an opportunity for the Mustangs. Of course, on your website, we're looking for volunteers. We're going to be working the ground to help raise the funds, which, of course, will help our students and support scholarships. They talked also about the painting in the dugout. I don't know if that's occurred yet, or is about to occur. So those were some of the topics that came up. It was a very spirited meeting about a lot of these topics, very good topics. The Mustangs don't meet every month now at this point. They use me, they, the next meeting will not be for May first.
May what?
May first. They meet on Wednesday, and so the first Wednesday, they're not going to meet in April.
And Mike? Layton, Karen?
March twenty-seventh, Cedar Hill.
Hilldale, Ed?
Yeah, just a reminder that March twenty-second, Michelle Sol, again. You're at the high school.
Michelle Sol again. I guess that's also Woodmont.
Yeah, that is Woodmont too. Yeah, it's always a good time, and this is the twentieth anniversary.
It's been a familiar... Valley View, John?
We have a meeting tomorrow morning.
Okay, that's amazing. Woodmont, Mike?
We have a meeting a week from tonight, which I've already formulated, not be attended because of our board meeting this weekend.
Michelle, Uzor?
Just a reminder, or speaking of fundraiser events, you go for registrations on the website, Uzor website, and their last meeting won't begin tonight.
There's just one more thing on that one. March twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth is Zar's school. They have guys and dolls, and they're in dress rehearsal.
Can we move along out there, if you have anything?
Yes, exactly.
High school, Mike, O'Brien?
Uh, okay, since you're putting in the plus, I just wanted to let you know that the New York Fall Fan Dinner is April twenty-sixth. Take the holiday, if you want to see Peter or the hat or anything like that, that's for you. It's going to be great to be on best ever this year. Because you've got people coming back from almost fifty years ago, some of them coming from California, Louisiana, Ohio, Washington, D.C., Florida. Some of these people coming back to the school, twenty decades.
Hopefully, we'll be supported. I know some of us are already signed up. And I'd like to thank you and Karen, the three of us. Karen, myself, and Mike, fine, along with Renee and her husband, went to the Chamber of Commerce, who we honored one of our own, Sue Marinella. And it was a very, very lengthy evening, but very, very words were very well-earned by everybody. And it was a beautiful evening, and the same location where they're having the Fall Fan Dinner. So I know that we're very proud of Sue and what she's accomplished, and it was a pleasure to be there to honor her. Well, participation is an opportunity to ask any questions on anything on the agenda. Anybody have any questions on the agenda? I'll let the head motion to move the agenda in a second, please. So...
Second.
Any comments on the eight minutes of the March fifth meeting? Any comments on the administration gifts? I am K facilities. I think we might want to, Katina, take item K six adoption of the budget, okay? You want to include that as part of the consent agenda, or you want to set it up to?
It can be part of the consent.
Part of consent, maybe separate vote, okay? Inter K L, M, and N is the policies. All right, no questions on them, please call the board or something.
Mr. Morell?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Cortelino?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Uh, yes, I'm staying on K one, check number nine zero six two eight.
Dr. Modrak?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mr. Rapidport?
Yes.
Ms. Suckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Graff? You too.
Okay, all, Harry?
Yes.
Good. Close session, there's no need for us to go into closed session at this point. All business, we have the all business. Remember, the next meeting is April second. Is that here or this meeting, or is it April second? Okay, any new business? General board comments?
Uh, I would just like to thank Dr. Rotar for being the main thanks to the community at large. It was a very powerful meeting. And the evening was great.
I need to share credit with a number of people, Leslie Shapman, Janice Say, Andrea, who all had a hand in, you know, planning the event. And thank Dak for their financial contribution to make it a reality.
For those that weren't there, we had about a hundred people there.
It was a good crowd.
Mike, yeah, I just thought I'd like to mention, and someday, I was there as a family, and I noticed a lot of Monville attendees at the event in Booty to show solidarity with our brethren of other faiths after the events that took place last year. And I really regret that I couldn't be there. And I noticed a lot of Monville people via One Monville, okay, which is a creative team to support superintendent. It was to via that, but that vehicle, I think, made a positive for some of the people. And the things I saw, it was really unfortunate that such a thing should not happen. It certainly created...
We have Monville cap as a nice, I put my name picture, so if anyone wanted to see it. Anybody else, Eddie Allen? All right, the last part of the meeting, I'll go to Karen for any, I am on the agenda. Please come over to the microphone. Tell us who you are, where you live.
Hello, brother. Hello. A lot of points, anyone who's arrived, I don't know. Um, I have an issue, and I've been going through the school, you know, I think it's the proper channel for this for several years now. My daughter's a senior in high school, and each year, at least once, she's had this crisis of moving classroom, documents disappearing, sometimes before her eyes, before our eyes, meaning not a lot of students saying, hey, this is, hey, look, here's the document, and it literally, as we're watching it, would have moved to the trash folder, or she had a fragment of a document being there and then not moving there. Over the years, she's raised this to the tech department, I raised it to Austin. I was in a meeting at one point with one of her teachers, and raised it to Mr. Cubs. Everyone said that they would deal with it, and yet again today, it happened. And I received a call from her when I was at her, she was very upset through the documents that disappeared, and the teacher was going to give her a zero for it. And eventually, the teacher agreed to allow her to rewrite documents, but she shouldn't have done. And here's an instance where, as she went to get the document from the teacher, and it said they had not available to her, she took a screenshot of the directory showing the document there, and then when she tried to access again, it disappeared completely, and you can't even find the folder that it was in. She went to the tech department about that, and they said that they don't see any evidence of any activity at all on our campus today, which obviously there is, because you've got a screenshot of it there and a screenshot of it not being there. I'm at my end, the end of what I can do here. I've tried working with everyone, with everybody, and everybody just said, yeah, that's a problem, we're going against that. But here it is, she's in her fourth and last year of high school, and we're still having these issues.
We've, are you finished, I guess? We've been made up with a situation just described, okay? We talked to the coordinator of the I T department, and they've been working on the problem, as you understand it. At this present time, I think the best thing to pursue would be to keep in touch with Dr. Rotar or Mrs. Slump. I know they're trying different things. I know they're trying to retrieve documents and things of that nature. We do not have an answer. We have to leave it with our I T people and our administration, and I'm not trying to push you off, but we cannot help it. We asked them to look into it, and they're going to be doing it, and I would encourage you to keep in touch with them. If they find anything, in the meantime, I'm sure they'll be in touch with you and with your wife. I know that the situation happened, I think, twice this year, two times, and in prior instances. It's just weird how it's happening, and I'm sure that I've found this. I hope that they can, other than that, Mr. Luttrell, I don't know what to tell you we can do at this point.
I can't tell you that it's happening other than that, because my daughter knows of friends who it's happened to. I know that one of her teachers complained at one point because she couldn't access any of her students.
Well, we don't know about the friends of your daughters, but what we do know is what happened to your daughter, and that's what they're working on. I don't know what else we can share with you at this time. We're disappointed it has happened, by all means. Should it be happening? No. We understand it doesn't happen that often, and it's been addressed. They can research the records, research reports. So that's what they've been presently doing. I don't know, Renee, you or Katina, if you want to speak to it, but I think we've...
No, I mean, really, it's a student matter. I don't really feel comfortable discussing it in a public or meeting setting.
I try suggestions to you, and I'm afraid...
Yeah.
You already did.
But I think, you know, probably we can, you know, based on research that the tech folks do, can share some additional information with you. But again, you know, it being a student matter, I really don't feel comfortable discussing it in the context of a public or meeting.
Well, I give you permission to discuss my students in public meetings.
Doesn't matter if she can't.
Okay, well, what do you suggest for my students in public meetings? You now have to rewrite a two-page.
All right, no comment on that, but I would suggest, moving forward, she might want to keep a thumb drive at ready access and backup every day.
Well, I actually had developed a solution for her a few years ago when this started happening, calling it backup to my personal ride, but your tech department put something in place which prevents stuff from being downloaded off of the student's account. But can you...
Robert, you're talking to nine board members of here who don't have the background that our tech people have, okay? Maybe one or two have some, but I'm trying to point you where you can get results. We're not going to be able to give you any results tonight. I can't say yes, it'll be fixed tomorrow, or it won't be fixed.
Well, I'll tell you, I mean, basically, now, I'm sorry if I sound frustrated, but this is, you know, four years ago, I've been dealing with the tech department. I didn't even get sponsored to my basket else, to Austin, regarding these types of issues.
Well, I was coming under you now, and no one came this afternoon.
No, I meant the device.
Oh, prior, again. Yeah, I mean, I really don't think we should discuss it.
Let's just stop right there.
We can deal with it with you.
We're trying to give you a direction to go. We're giving you the superintendent here. We call them, and Austin there, they can try and find out, explain to you what is happening, what is researching. We cannot let go of that further tonight.
Do you have anything I said about your specific intention to do this?
Okay.
You're suggesting I set up a...
I'm sorry?
You're suggesting I set up a vote to keep your intentions?
I suggest you contact her, yes.
Okay.
Well, I'm assuming you're getting in touch with Don or with Austin. I know this is a critical time of the president and everything, but I'm sure she'll follow the wish of them whenever other citizens is asking you.
Okay, all right.
If she can't meet it, she'll have Dr. Schur there and Dr. Thomas, the I T guy, if she's not available. Because I know you want to get this done as soon as possible, pass it over to me.
Yeah.
Okay? So if Renee's not available, Dr. Schur will be your contact person, and you can go from there, one move to your goal.
Okay, I'll leave a message, so you can call me tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, just now?
Yes, oh, I'm just, can I just ask if the board just be kept in the prize domain of developments just kept in the loop?
Right.
Can I just ask if the board just be kept in the loop domain of developments?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And the whole, open your name and address.
Naomi Ashtray, Ten Cooks Farm, Oklahoma. So I wanted to talk a little about the award recognition. At the time of this meeting, I saw a Twitter feed that they talked about students of the line. But overall, like, this is one of the typical Twitter feed, like, as a baseball team, St. Patrick's Day, basketball, basketball, budget, softball, lacrosse, baseball, Steenawicky Nationals, concert, basketball, 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 lacrosse. What it's not showing is some of the recent awards that I've heard of going on in schools. Eighth grader making nationals at the geography league. Last year's map Olympia, who's in the new program, you have fantastic participation. The winners were just called down to the office, and that was it. The thing I mentioned why they were going down to the office. This year's map Olympia, kids don't even know their scores yet. The end of the month ago, my son won his first two scores, which was like October and November, certainly football. And this year's math council team was fantastic. It was led by two sixth graders and two seventh graders. The team came in four places at regional, and one of the sixth graders actually made it to the states. There was no mention of this anywhere, I didn't see it online, or even mentioned on the board names. It's just, I just want to see, it's so easy to give this kind of recognition. The award are teachers and administrators, teacher of the year, or multiple other stuff on the website. Just let's... Just let's give the recognition for a great job. I hope to get it at work, when I do a great job, I hope to see my kids get it. The only other thing I wanted to add, like, oh, I have a son in New York, I have a son in elementary school. My first grader was in the G M T program, he's recently been saying, I hate math. This is a kid in age two that the only toys he wanted were number toys. That I have, he's asking me to clown to making balloons in shape of numbers. It was SpongeBob, he danced just numbers, and I would use math as a reward against student. One other thing I would just add to what, like, what I said earlier, I was actually in a pep band in college. And I was actually glad, I had an option for a pep band and not a marching band, because I can never remember panels and stuff. And to be doing all that movement and instrumenting for me, so why should I have a pep band? Though you need.
Wondering, I'm going to ask the superintendent to respond, okay?
Um, I appreciate your comments in terms of Twitter, and you have to understand that this is, we have a public communications officer, district communication officer. And it's not that posting the Twitter feed is her one and only responsibility. I think we, if I'm my end, I will try to shore up those communication links so that information is getting to her. I have a feeling that she is not aware
I agree.
of all of those accomplishments. If she was, she certainly would be posting a lot of what gets posted. She's actually taking from feeds of Zar and some of the buildings. So I understand it's something that we can do to tighten things up on our end, and I would certainly pursue that.
I think so, and I don't fault it, I do, I do agree with you, and I do believe that, and it's Twitter, and it's Facebook, it's all the same stuff. So I want to see some of the whole, I think, at the teacher level, some of the comment at the person level. So I think we just have to kind of change in process to be like, we want to reward these, so that if any of them get put together.
It's, it's really the communication, if she doesn't know what's happening, it won't appear.
Yeah, but you can help, you can help foster that.
Yeah, that's easy enough, I will certainly do that.
I just want my kids to be rewarded when they do have to be.
Sure.
We love children too. Some stuff is related to my kids, some stuff that I don't do.
Yep, I would certainly pursue that.
Thank, it doesn't matter, thank you, Dr. Roetker. Any other things? Okay, uh, any other questions, board members? Yes, Karen?
I, I think it's my follow-up on the Congress investigation, calling disappearing material from the computer.
Well, I'm sure Renee will update me on Fridays when we get our updates.
I mean, just in case, you know, somebody's hacking in, maybe it's, you know, some third world hacker, or somebody disappearing the documents. I mean, we've had these things happen, somebody hacked into my identity, I don't know why they would want it, you know, that happened.
You know, no Robert will call tomorrow, as he does.
Get to the bottom.
That's not going to say they're going to be meeting with you tomorrow morning at eight thirty, Robert, okay? Uh, I've been on the library with Robert for three years, so I know he'll give you a good chance. Okay.
Well, I do.
Anything else?
Chuck, I can just add with regard to the last statement that was made. I mean, as a district, I hope you realize me, I think we take great pride, very great pride in student achievements. We have the website, we have the good news, the progress, we frequently honor students. And I don't think we pass any opportunity that we know of. So the things you brought to our attention are obviously important to us. Um, we welcome any oppo, any opportunity to be able to honor any of our student achievements. And to whatever extent we can improve on that, I'm sure we will. I know Dr. Roetker and our administration are very, very positive in promoting the achievements of both our students and our teachers.
Yeah, I mean, I wish, I know we're all looking at what we need in also, but, you know, I know you guys are on paper.
Anything else? Motion? General vote? Second? More or less?
Please do not speak right before.
Volunteer?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.